Since I've got everyone's attention, let the record reflect, we've reconvened with all members present. Councilman Landrigan is excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for the executive minutes of October 11th, 2017.
Second.
Is it to be discussed? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion for the regular minutes of October 11th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion and corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. It's a big crowd that just came to show for the Rodin, I'm sure that's the reason everyone's here. Just a few, one housekeeping item, the work agenda item and the introduction of ordinance related to the protecting borough trees. The shade tree management board wants more work on that. We expect that to come back at the next meeting, so that is pulled from the agenda and will not be part of the council discussion nor the first comment period. It's been a busy, well, it's only been a week and a half since our last meeting, since we had met on a Wednesday, but last weekend, the Garden Club of Madison was hosting a regional flower show. It was two years in the making, tremendous amount of planning and execution to make it happen. The volunteers of the club really put their heart and soul into it, and I want to also thank our DPW crew that came in and cleared this room of every chair, cleared the courtroom of every chair, moved furniture around to make it a great show and is so important. We know, as we've been reading the paper recently, this building is such a treasure, and any way we can get people in here to appreciate that treasure is tremendous. And talking about that, there is the buzz about the Rodin back in the corner, so those have been coming in council meetings, have seen that sculpture back there. And just to be clear, it never was lost, new is always there. There is even in a 1942 document outlining the gift of the artwork in this room that went to Hartley Dodge trustees, it mentioned "The Bust of Napoleon" by Rodin, but was kind of was lost as a fact that what it truly meant to have Rodin in this building, and it certainly was lost to the art world, and that is truly art world, as some of the articles have been picked up in England and France about the Rodin and people wondering where was the bust of Napoleon all these years. And we do know that just because a document in 1942 said it was Rodin, that is not what it justifies it to be declared a Rodin, so it was the work of Drew graduate student, another sign of how valuable a university in our town is, Mallory Mortelarelo, sorry, that her persistence to verify it was Rodin created the excitement. She called the Rodin Museum in France and they said, "There's actually, we'll send you an application process," because I guess everyone calls every other day to say they have Rodin, and her persistence verified it. And as I said, it's a reminder of the special place we have in Hartley Dodge. Just look around this room, look around the hallways as you go out, all the historic pictures. The trustees have done a great job of maintaining this, and that's also a reminder, it's been suggested, why don't we sell the Rodin to help Madison projects? It belongs to the trustees, and Mrs. Dodge gave it to Madison to be appreciated by the residents forever. So, the Rodin will take a little vacation, will spend more time out of Madison than I ever did, and a year in Philadelphia at the Philadelphia Museum of Art, and so we'll be looking forward to Napoleon coming back home in the future. And this past weekend, I want to thank council president Carmela Vitale for pinching for me while I was out of town. We had two celebrations, a thrift shop celebrated their 75th anniversary, and so Carmela presented a proclamation there, and then she headed off to the adult school for celebrating their 80th anniversary. So, we do have a crowd here, I'm going to come down and do a proclamation. We do have one field hockey parent, at least one of here sitting at the council table, so Maureen Byrne, please step up also. Amory Davies, please come forward. And, Austria, come up, yeah, I had a feeling you were, yeah, actually, I meant to check ahead of time, because I had a feeling you were also a field hockey parent. And how about current and past coaches in the audience, come enjoy Amory up here. I would like the players to have a leave, but no one in the audience, but I think they'll do, because that's, I'll ask all the players to come up here also, because it's so important, this recognition. 600 career wins, I'm just going to flip this, it's working? Is it working out there? It's not working? It's blinking. I do have a phone, so I was wondering if I'd lost my voice.
Yes. Do you want to use this, Mayor?
So one of the things I did to just get a perspective on 600 career wins is just look up two legendary coaches, this is not field hockey, but NFL, but you think about Tom Landry and Don Shula, two longtime coaches, Cowboys and Dolphins respectively, Shula was also with the Colts. If you put their success together, two legendary coaches together, they come short of Amory Davies. In fact, 16 games short, so they'd have to go an undefeated season just to catch up. So here's our recognition, whereas a lifelong resident of Madison and herself alumna of Madison High School, class of '74! Sorry. Amory Davies has coached the Madison High School field hockey team for 36 years, and whereas this year's field hockey team is ranked sixth, we had to rewrite the proclamation because when it was drafted, it was seventh, but we're moving up in the NJ.com top 20, and their victory over Maristown Beard on Saturday, September 23rd, made Coach Davies the second coach in state history, second coach in state history, and the 13th coach nationally to achieve a 600-win milestone. That is incredible. Whereas the team won the 22nd Morris County Tournament Championship for Madison High School on Tuesday, October 17th, and will now play for the state championship yet again. And whereas, respect for her coaching style, Coach Davies credits her assistant coaching staff, we have a small representation right here, I lost track of where I was, sorry, and the players for, and we have a lot of players out in the audience, for 66 championships won under her tenure. And whereas, career accomplishments at Madison High School for Coach Davies include 24 conference titles, 22 Morris County Tournament titles, 15 state sectional titles, and five New Jersey group championships. And whereas, over the years, thousands of young women have enjoyed playing the game of field hockey, thanks to the commitment and dedication of Coach Davies. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize and congratulate Madison High School field hockey varsity coach Amory Davies on her 600th career milestone. And Amory's can say a few words, but as she's getting ready, tell all the players, come on up here. Yep, kind of fill in here, we'll, come on up, don't be bashful.
You can come in. Really, that's good. You can kind of like get in here, squat down, I don't know, whatever. Okay, while they're still, is this on? Is this on?
I think it's on.
Red? Oh, it's on, okay. Was it on? It's on? Okay. Wow. I just want to thank the Borough Council for honoring me tonight, but there's three different thank yous I want to give out. Number one would be to the fans, my family, and all the parents that have endured all our seasons throughout the years. My second thank you goes to my coaches, my past and present. My present coaching staff is fabulous. We have Victoria Sacco, who was a former player of mine, came back from Brown to coach, she's my assistant, and then we have Courtney Davis, who also played for me and went to Cabrise and played field hockey and lacrosse there. And we also have an alumni within Clarissa Sacco as a parent of one of my alumnis, also came back to coach the freshman team. One of our coaches is not feeling well, she isn't here, Britt Blankmeyer, but she is from Maristown, she did come over to our side and is now Madison Dodger. The third thank you goes to all our players from the past and these kids standing in front of you. They got me my sixth under win, and I can't be more than gratified to them. I also have players, some couple of players might be in the audience that are here, Maeve, my cousin Debbie, Katie Senna, I mean, it's just awesome. We have our trainer, Meg, who endures all our injuries and our whining and whatnot and takes care of us year in and year out. It's a blessing to be part of this program and this culture, I just want to say, and this is a deal I'm going to make with the Madison Borough, we're now on our journey to the state title, we're going to bring it back to Madison. Yeah. Okay, let's do our cheer, we got a little, we got a little cheer, we want to leave it wherever you're going.
We are a team, we are a team, we play as a team, we play as a team, we're coming on, we're coming on, we're going, we're going, we're going, we're going, we're going.
We're losing most of our audience.
Hi Sandy.
Frankie Davis is doing.
You too.
Yeah, it's been five weeks, I'm just, it's not easy.
Hey Jess, good, how are you?
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Nice to see you.
Are you feeling okay?
All right, back to business, but that's a tremendous moment and something that certainly makes us very proud here in Madison. Onto reports from committees. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The mechanic department of Department of Public Works has been very busy servicing and repairing police vehicles, they're still working on the grass cutting equipment, and they always repair DPW vehicles, they're installing and servicing all the leaf blowers because that's what we're going to be needing very shortly. They removed a bucket and stall claw on a loader for the leaves to get that ready, and repaired the brakes on the leaf machine, which, thank God, I wouldn't want that to be coming in my house. Anyway, the Parks Department, they're still cutting and weeding and trimming the bushes in the various parks areas. There are some recreational fields that still need to be lined for appropriate games. We have four ball in Madison. They installed new swings at Dodge Field Park, and they repaired the sprinkler system at HEM. As the mayor announced, they helped with the flower show setup and the cleanup, they did a great job, it was a beautiful evening here, and also helped with Bottle Hill Day setup and cleanup. If anybody walked downtown the next day, you wouldn't know that there were 20,000 people here on Saturday. Roads Department has been installing street signs, they're replacing sidewalks and curbing on Community Place, and they are filling potholes yet. They also help with the flower show setup and cleanup, and of course with Bottle Hill Day. And they've been helping the Water Department with repairs. As far as the Sewer Department is concerned, they have daily operations and maintenance of the lift stations, pump replacement at Candlewood, lift station completed, four basin rebuilds from wear and decay, some pump discharge realignment on Rachel Lift Station due to rust and rot failure, so that was replaced. They do lots of miscellaneous markouts for demolitions, PSE and G and the Water Department as well. One of the other things I want to talk about that the mayor has mentioned is on Saturday morning, Maureen Byrne and I went over to the 75th anniversary of the independent thrift shop. They were just absolutely thrilled that we were there and brought them a proclamation, and they're a wonderful organization, and there were people there that had probably volunteered, you know, in the last 70 years, so it was a really very, very nice occasion. Pilot JC from the State Assembly joined us with their resolution as well. And then off, like the mayor said, we went to the adult school and presented the Borough and presented a proclamation there. At that time, they presented to me, to the Borough, this flag, which flew over the Capitol Building in Washington DC. So our hope is, is that what we can do is put it on the flagpole down at the adult school, at the Civic Center, which holds the adult school. So that was a nice, that was a nice little surprise. Very happy, very happy with us that we gave them that proclamation, but they're two very generous volunteer organizations, so it was absolute privilege to be there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, the administration is continuing to work with the department heads on the 2018 budget, and Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett have also been working with Bob Vogel, the Borough Engineer, and other department heads on revising the five-year capital plan. The goal is to follow the same schedule last year with initial presentation and then introduction of appropriation ordinances for the roadwork to immediately follow. So this will allow for the roads to be packaged, which makes the projects easier to manage and hopefully reduces the costs. And the administration will be coming to the council later in the year with a list of capital ordinances that have been completed and that should be canceled. This is done annually, so the funds can be brought back to the Capital Improvement Fund and then appropriated to other projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Walkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Water Department, let me remind you all that hydrant flushing program is still going on, so if at any point you find that your water is cloudy or isn't operating as usual, before you make that phone call, please give it a few minutes, it may well be the result of some flushing going on near your home. We had a couple of problems that were caused by outside agencies that the Water Department addressed very quickly. One had to do with PSE and G, and during some night work, they managed to cause a few repairs to have to be done by our Water Department. And we also had a leaky fire hydrant on Shunpike Road that was damaged due to the unauthorized use by an outside contractor. I didn't ask the question as to who pays, but I hope the perpetrators do in these cases. We're also continuing to put in the meter, the new meters, and we're installing radio transmitters for remote water meter reading and outside registers. This is an exciting project, we've talked about it often, and it's very much in gear. From the Electric Department, very briefly, they have begun installation of transformers and meters at the KRE project. They removed an old pole at North Street Sewer Pump Station, they've installed new ones on Greenwood Avenue, and they have done numerous streetlight repairs, I guess in preparation for daylight savings time ending. So I have some other things to mention about the electric utility. I expect that a report that was prepared by our CFO, Jim Burnett, will be presented at a council meeting sometime in November, but there were a couple of highlights of that report I thought I had to mention, sort of as a teaser to his upcoming presentation. First of all, the overall performance of the utility is very much in line with estimates, and that's a good thing. The cooler summer did result in lower revenue, but it was offset by lower electric costs, so the net result is that surplus generation is still very much on track.
Okay, you may resume.
Not a record, but very impressive. Regarding the dividend, so far we've distributed over $600,000 to customers, and it's anticipated that over the 12-month period from the time it was initiated, we will reach our target of giving back 1.5 million. The dividend resulted in our electric utility rates dropping by over 7%, which is the largest rate drop in the state of New Jersey over the past year. By comparison, three of the four public utilities increased their rate during that time, so obviously we look very favorable. The Borough also, as you know, had established a needs-based rebate program where eligible residents could receive a one-time credit of $150 on their electric bill. Since the beginning of the year, the Borough has received 361 applications, which resulted in the distribution of $54,150 in credit. The opportunity to claim a rebate still exists, so if you believe you're eligible, please contact us and we will let you know, and if indeed you are, it's a very easy $150. Thank you, Mayor.
Just want to make a note that your operations part of your report on the electric utility was the last one supplied by Michael Piano.
Yes.
You will be retiring this.
Indeed.
And with that, on to Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At its October meeting, the Board of Health introduced an ordinance that will amend Chapter 218 of the Borough Code, which is nuisances. This includes addressing invasive species. A public hearing will be held at the November 21st Board of Health meeting for anyone from the public who wishes to comment. The Madison Flu clinic dates at the Civic Center on Walnut Street are as follows, tomorrow from 9:00 AM to 11:00, and then again on Wednesday, November 1st, from 9:00 AM to 11:00. Foraging Positive Futures Through Positive Parenting is a program on parenting that features a certified parent coach who will provide interactive and engaging parenting workshops and courses. These courses will be held October 25th, November 1st, 8th, 15th, and they'll be held at the Madison Y from 6:30 to 8:00. Please call Lindsey Pruitt to sign up at the Madison Health Department. Check your Meds Day pharmacy program with the Massa and Madison Pharmacy will be held on October 20th from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Madison Senior Center. I apologize, that has already happened. Massa and the Morris County Prevention, they gave me that one, that also happened. The Mayor's Wellness Campaign, the fitness crawl, is scheduled from November 5th, so that's still going to happen, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There are six different fitness studios that are participating. Participants have the opportunity to experience a 20- to 25-minute workout at each facility, and subsequently, this will help them to decide which is the best fit for their workout needs. And finally, the department is doing its preliminary planning for the December's rabies clinic dates to follow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And for Community Affairs, and if you have anything, Public Safety.
No, nothing for Community Affairs, although the way we're all sneezing and coughing, I think we should be the first ones in line for the flu vaccine. From the Police Department, very important, the public's help is needed to help solve a 1982 homicide that took place here in Madison. It soon will be 35 years since James Wesco was found murdered at the Madison train station. The passage of time has not lessened the desire of law enforcement authorities to solve this crime. To that end, Morris County Prosecutor Frederick Knapp and Madison Police Chief Darren Datchison are calling on the public to provide any assistance it can to solve Wesco's murder. On Thursday, October 21st, 1982, at about 3:14 AM, a Madison police were alerted by a Conrail train employee reporting a person lying on the station's upper eastbound train platform. Upon the arrival of the police, a deceased male was found in the platform area. The male was later identified as James Wesco of New Providence. It was subsequently determined that he died as a result of a homicide. He had last been seen at the Park Tavern in Madison at about 12:30 and on Lincoln Place at approximately 12:50. Saturday pass marked the 35th anniversary of the homicide. Law enforcement remains committed to solving this case and providing answers regarding the death of this victim. Although this case is 35 years old, we are just as eager to solve this case as our predecessors were in 1982, Chief Datchison said. We owe it to the victim and his family to continue the investigation and take a fresh look. If anyone has any information that they believe can aid investigators in this matter, they are asked to call Madison Police Sergeant Paul Kozakowski, the Morris County Prosecutor's Office Major Crimes Unit, or Crime Stoppers at 973-COP-CALL. Madison officers have received, with the ongoing opiate epidemic, Madison officers will be trained on the recent Morris County Opiate Initiative called Narcon 2.0. This program requires officers to request a peer recovery specialist to respond to an emergency room after a life-saving Narcan is administered by officers. Prosecutor Frederick Knapp said, "The goal is for the recovery specialist to convince the individual to undergo treatment which can break the cycle of addiction and very simply save lives." He also said, "This truly will provide people with a second chance at life." In an effort to combat this deadly cycle and steer those patients to treatment, the new Narcan 2.0 partnership has formed among the Morris County Prosecutor's Office, St. Clair's Health, Atlantic Health System, the County of Morris, the nonprofit Morris Cares, and municipal law enforcement agencies. Peer recovery specialists will be dispatched from Cares to St. Clair's Health and Atlantic Health Systems Hospitals. The Morris County Prosecutor's Office will devote $10,000 of drug forfeiture money to train the recovery specialists. Melody Runyon, Associate Director for Morris County Prevention, is key, said, "Evidence indicates that administering a drug like Narcan to an individual who suffers an opiate overdose is a critical step needed to save a life. However, by itself, it is not nearly enough to accomplish the goal of connecting the drug abuser with needed treatment or recovery support." drug abuser with needed treatment or recovery support." And although, you know, we think we here in Madison are sometimes immune to problems like this, we are not. From the Fire Department, for tonight's council meeting, during the month of September, the Fire Department responded to 21 general alarms, 21 still alarms, 23 investigations, 50 EMS calls, for a total of 114 calls. 35 fire prevention inspections were made, 13 resale smoke CO inspections were made. This is interesting. On October 4th and 5th, the Fire Department conducted a 16-hour trench rescue class, which was held at the DPW's yard on John Avenue. A total of 23 Madison Cedar Knolls and Whippenny firefighters trained together in removing buried victims from a trench. A special thanks goes to our DPW for digging an eight-foot-deep, four-foot-wide by 30-foot-long trench for the Fire Department to train in. Wonder who was in the trench. Residents are reminded that October is Fire Prevention Month. The Madison Fire Prevention Bureau will be visiting all elementary, middle, and pre-K schools with fire prevention programs geared for each age group. Our seniors will be presented with safety programs as well. And finally, Madison volunteer fighter Craig Thomas will be leaving us effective October 25th. Craig is taking a career firefighting position with Loudoun County Fire and Rescue in Virginia. Craig has been a volunteer member of the Fire Department since March of 2015. We thank him for his dedicated service to Madison and wish him well in his new career with Loudoun County Fire and Rescue. That's all.
Thank you. Any communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
Since we have no agenda discussions, since we pulled the Borough tree during construction and put that to the next meeting, and there are no ordinances for hearing, we'll combine the two invitations for discussion. So now, anyone in the public wish to comment on anything, please step forward, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, Council Mayor. My name is Jesse Esposito, Community Place in Madison. One, I want to thank you for getting done as much as we have gotten done over on community, which I am grateful for, that the housing has transferred the street over to the Borough. One of the things I'd also like to comment on was revealed to me that there was an issue about signage because they wanted to wait until next year when the street was weaved done. I would like to please suggest that signage go up now, as soon as possible. We did do the yellow on the driveways, that was all that's done. And really, we need to start posting the signage up so these people that are parking there can get the idea that this is not just a dumb street to dump their cars on, including the businesses, including the housing and whatnot. The guy at, Adrian Taylor, who owns 20 Cook Avenue, has rented his home to college boys from Fairly Dickinson. I am not complaining about them. The kids are very respectful and very good and very kind to everyone, so they're not an issue, but they do have a lot of cars now. There are six to seven cars parked every day on community for that house. So it's okay. I'm not complaining as long as they park on that side and don't worry about the rest of it. But I've had Cindy from the Parking Authority who keeps removing the sign and removing my cone because I did put a cone in front of my house because when my family comes to visit, I do want them to be able to. So with that said, thank you again for having the street done and getting the street back. Now we can start posting signs and I am truly requesting that the, I guess it's the north side or the west side of the street be a continuation of no parking as it is on the first half of Community Place. From Park to Cook is no parking on that side of the street. I am requesting and asking, please, make it no parking on that side of the street a continuation. Thank you for listening. Thank you for having me and thank you all for everything you've done so far.
Thank you, Jesse. Just an update, as you can imagine, in the government world, things don't go as quickly as we'd like. So the Housing Authority did pass the resolution to transfer that, but that is one step. So we have, because it's included in their lot, so we have to do a subdivision, has to go through to separate the street from their lot. So that's going to be step two. And then once that's done, then, you know, and all that, that's now underway, I think with the meets and bounds have been done. And so we're moving forward with getting that to the zoning or planning board to take care of. And then, once it's official, then it is a borough street and then it'll be subject to the Borough parking regulations, we'll be able to enforce it. So it's, we have, even though it's not officially a borough street, you probably noticed that it has become part of the routine of street sweeping when they do Cook and the other ones.
Not like street sweeping, they've actually put, you know, fixed the potholes and fixed the manhole. So that's all a plus and that's all going very well. I'm grateful for that. The only thing I just want to reiterate to you and Council is the fact that when both sides of that street, people are parked on both sides of that street, emergency vehicles cannot be given. I've notified housing several times now over the past month that their garbage container, trash bin is broken, been on community streets since, for a month now. And I did request the repair and moved back into the fenced-in area where the containment area belongs to, although I have not been successful with that.
And I have to, I'm sorry, because we're past here three minutes, so.
Okay. Sorry. You know, with both sides of the street are full, it's just impossible to get emergency vehicles and I don't want to take any chances with people in the housing.
So in anticipation of the Borough taking over the street, we'll have Lieutenant Longo and Fire Department look at if we restrict parking on one side like it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction ordinance, will a clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for November 13th, 2017. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the Bulletin Board, made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance 44-2017 for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Appropriating $41,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for radios for the Fire Department.
I move Ordinance 44-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Will call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, will a clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution required will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Consent Agenda Resolutions are 269-2017 to Resolution 277-2017.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Will call a vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Current fund, $5,119,912.79. General Capital Fund, $1,760.31. Electric Operating Fund, $127,637.37. Water Operating Fund, $43,277.34. Water Capital Fund, $611.45. And the Trust, $13,299.78. Total is $5,305,868.04.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Discussion? Will call a vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no new business.
I move we adjourn.
We're going to get a council picture by the. All right, got a group vote.